Regular meeting number 33 will now come to order. Please stand for the playing of the National Anthem. Councilmember Mitch Brown, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the great liberty for which it stands, one nation under God, and individual with liberty and justice for all.
Is Monsignor Cody here? In Monsignor Cody's absence, let's please just stand for a moment of silence. Thank you. Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
Can I get a motion dispensed with the reading of the Journal? Or a second?
Second.
Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
This week's communications received by the city's clerk's office are listed on the agenda to be published in the City bulletin. Are there any other communications to be read in the record?
Not at this time.
How about resolutions from Member of Council? Councilmember Elizabeth Brown.
Um, not at this time.
Councilmember Mitch Brown.
I do have one announcement.
Please.
Uh, Council President, I do like to announce that Officer John Fannin, if you support the podium. Officer Fannin, would you please approach the podium? Tonight, Officer Fannin began his career working in the Columbus Division of Police in June 20th, 1993. I would like to thank him, on behalf of my colleagues, for your service to the residents of Columbus, and specifically to the current councilmembers and councilmembers past and present for protecting us in City Council. Every week Officer Fannin shows up and does the job, and no one really pays attention or notices him unless there's a problem. I want to take a moment, on behalf of all my colleagues, to say thank you. Officer Fannin, would you have anything you'd like to say, sir?
President Klein, Councilmember Brown, members of Council, I greatly am humbled by your comments, I appreciate it. And in all due respect to the Division of Police, thanks for having me here, especially Sergeant Ayers in the back as well. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all I have, Council President.
Got one angry officer over there now.
I can handle it, it'll be all right.
Councilmember Harden.
Thank you, President Klein. Just two quick announcements. On Wednesday, June 26th, at 5:30 in Council chambers, I will convene a public hearing on the Charter Review Committee recommendations. President Klein recently hosted a public hearing to discuss the total scope of the recommendations. This hearing will, on the 26th, will focus on the best practices for the districting process. So we'll look at how a body that will draw the committee will be structured, how long they would have to complete the task, and how they would be selected. So encourage community feedback and engagement, starting with next Wednesday, June 26th, at 5:30. And secondly, on next Thursday, June 27th, at 6:00 PM, I'll be hosting a public service roundtable at the Westgate Shelter House. I've been doing these roundtables around town for just about a year now, and I, along with the head of Traffic Management, Refugees, Infrastructure, and the director's team, host small conversations about the transportation issues facing the folks in and around the Westgate area. So again, that is 6:00 PM at the Westgate Shelter House on Thursday, June 27th. Encourage folks to come out. Thank you, President Klein.
Thank you, President Klein. I do have a quick announcement. Tomorrow, Tuesday, June 20th, the Housing Committee will have a public hearing, and it will take place at the Neighborhood Pride Center located at 248 East 11th Avenue at 5:00 PM. And the purpose of this public hearing is to address the petition to expand the Jeffrey Place New Community Revitalization Authority, which is a new community authority formed pursuant to the Ohio Revised Code, Chapter 349. Again, this hearing will be tomorrow at 5:00 PM. Thank you.
Thank you, President Klein. Two quick announcements. Our friends with the Hilltop Business Association ask that we remind everyone that this Saturday is the 81st Annual Hilltop Bean Dinner. Since 1926, the HBA has sponsored the yearly community gathering to thank the Hilltop residents for their business and support. The Bean Dinner remains the largest and oldest community festival on the west side, and that tradition will continue this Saturday, June 24th, from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM in Westgate Park. Hope everyone will be there, as I'll be serving beans at some point as part of the tradition. And since I'm on the theme of festivals this weekend, also want to remind folks, we will have ComFest in Gooddale Park, and that festival will be from Friday through Saturday. ComFest is a free, non-corporate yearly celebration of our city's community organizations, performers, artists, and volunteers. Look forward to seeing not only my colleagues, but members of the audience and viewing audience at both festivals this weekend. Thank you, President Klein. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Stenziano. How about any comments from Mr. Dorian? Treasurer's Office, City Attorney's Office, Judge Barrows?
No.
Are there any requests by members of Council for the removal of an ordinance or resolution from the consent action portion of the agenda? Seeing none, we now have a motion to waive reading of the titles of 30-day legislation by the city clerk. Is there a second? Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
Thank you. Clerk Blevins, will you now read into the record the ordinance numbers of 30-day legislation on tonight's agenda for first reading?
Yes. Finance Committee, ordinance 1254-2017. Economic Development Committee, ordinance is 1480, 1494, 1516, 1538, 1539, 1540, 1555-2017. Public Service and Transportation Committee, ordinance is 1531, 1532, 1568-2017. Recreation and Parks Committee, ordinance is 1446, 1511-2017. Technology Committee, ordinance 1347-2017. Public Utilities Committee, ordinance is 962, 1274, 1339, 1366, and 1514-2017. Rules and Reference Committee, ordinance 1350-2017.
Thank you, clerk. We do, actually, we got to go to the consent. The following ordinances appear on our agenda as consent actions. Clerk, will you please now read the ordinance numbers of each into the record?
Resolutions of Expression 183X, 184X-2017. Finance Committee, ordinance 1344, 1434, 1463, and 1488-2017. Health and Human Services Committee, ordinance 1441-2017. Economic Development Committee, ordinance 1416-2017. Public Safety Committee, ordinance 1433-2017. Small and Minority Business Development Committee, ordinance 1605-2017. Recreation and Parks Committee, ordinance 1541-2017. Housing Committee, ordinance is 1479, 1496, 1506, 1554-2017. Technology Committee, ordinance 1097-2017. Public Utilities Committee, ordinance 1392-2017. And appointments from the mayor's office numbered A0105 and 106-2017.
Thank you, clerk. We do have one consent speaker. It's Lisa Daris, Doris? Please come forward. Looks like you're speaking against 1541-2017, which is in the Recreation and Parks Committee? If you just could state your name, please, please, yeah, you're fine. If you just could state your name, your address, any organizations you may represent today, and you'll have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Lisa Daris, and I'm the owner and operator of a small business called Olentangy Paddle. Our business is focused on the waterways of Columbus. We focus on improving the waterways of Columbus through restoration, education, and recreation. And when I filled out the form, I didn't really want to mark "against" because I want to clarify, I'm not really against the ordinance. In fact, I am so proud to be from a city where the members of this council and the director of Parks and Rec have very wisely put an emphasis on our waterways and made them a feature of our downtown. Once the waterways were open to the public in November of 2015, many of our customers, both individuals and nonprofit and corporate folks, said, "How can we use your services to get downtown Columbus?" And we've been talking with Parks and Rec, and as you may know, the ordinance that is on the topic, on the agenda tonight, 1541-2017, it includes a vote to award the contract for watercraft rental concessions to a single nonprofit organization as the vendor. Although I'm in the support of limiting this opportunity to service vendors so that safety and proper training certifications can be ensured, I know that the marketplace of central Ohio can support more than one provider, especially one like us who has a proven track record for approximately 4,000 customers during the last four years that have used our services to date. Comparable cities such as Austin, Texas, Indianapolis, and Cleveland have more than one concession provider on the waterways because the market supports it. So tonight, I respectfully ask you to consider the message that your vote sends to small businesses like mine that want to work with the city. I look forward to future opportunities to partner with the city. In fact, the director, Tony Collins, here, we're meeting in July to discuss future opportunities where we can get Olentangy Paddle customers on the waterway. Thank you.
So you do have a meeting on the books with the director? Okay. Any questions or comments for our speaker? Thank you. Any other questions or comments about the consent action portion of the agenda? Seeing none, can I get a motion for approval of the consent? Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden.
Sorry, it's been moved by Councilmember Brown. Has it been seconded? Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
Consent action carries. My oversight, but I want to go back to the resolution section to Councilmember Brown, she does have two resolutions before we go to second reading tabled in emergency legislation.
Thank you, President Klein. I would like to start with Resolution 0181X-2017. So could three women from the Alzheimer's Association please approach the podium? Kaitlyn Perk, Jill Grosshider Rudd, and Meredith Harrison. Alzheimer's currently affects 5.5 million Americans and an estimated 210,000 Ohioans. By 2050, Alzheimer's is projected to affect 13.8 million Americans and 250,000 Ohioans. This fatal disease has no known cure and no effective means of prevention or treatment. These statistics help highlight why it is so important to raise awareness for Alzheimer's and other dementias, and to continue working towards a cure through advocacy and research. Beyond the statistics, there is a very real impact on individuals and families from this disease. That is why June 21st, which is the longest day of the year, is officially recognized as the longest day during Alzheimer's Awareness Month. This serves to remind us of the struggles faced by a person living with Alzheimer's or a person acting as a caregiver to someone with Alzheimer's, and that every day is the longest day for these individuals. Columbus City Hall will be lit purple tomorrow evening to mark the beginning of the longest day. I hope that this lighting, along with this resolution, will help raise awareness of the growing issue of dementia and the ongoing efforts to find a solution. I want to thank the Alzheimer's Association of Central Ohio for being here this evening to receive the resolution and bring further awareness to your work. The Alzheimer's Association is the largest nonprofit funder of Alzheimer's research and provides support and care to those living with the disease. The Central Ohio chapter is committed to meeting the needs of every community member affected by Alzheimer's disease and other forms of dementia through family and clinical support, education, advocacy, and research. Thank you again for being here this evening. Thank you for your work in the community. I would like to move for adoption.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
And I would like to invite you to have the microphone.
Hi there. I just wanted to say thank you so much for the resolution tonight. As you had mentioned, the longest day is our signature day of action during the Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness Month, where individuals will do what they love to honor those who are struggling with the disease today. We have several individuals in our community alone who have the disease, and amongst those, there are several caretakers who are greatly affected.
And just to emphasize on what Meredith said, lighting up the City Hall purple is something that helps raise that awareness. What you're doing here tonight raises awareness, and we appreciate that. And it doesn't just stop this month, it goes through the fall. We have our Walk to End Alzheimer's on Sunday, September 24th, down at Huntington Park. We call it our largest support group. We have nearly 5,000 people in attendance, and we hope that everyone in your networks and your communities will help us support and continue the action that happens during Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness Month. So thank you again for having us, we really appreciate it.
Thank you so much. Resolution, lost my number here. A resolution for World Refugee Day, 0169X-2017. So as I read it, could Nadia Kosvin, Tarek Terry, Tara Dengana, and members of Representative David Leland's office please approach the podium? The United Nations General Assembly first officially recognized June 20th as World Refugee Day in 2000. It has been recognized each year since, and I believe we are living in a time where it is more important than ever to recognize this day, to highlight the international issue of refugees and to emphasize the work that we can do in our community to help. The United Nations estimates that there are currently more than 16 million refugees who have fled their countries and more than 37 million who have been displaced from their homes within their own country. These are individuals and families in need of help, and it is important to continuously highlight that. Columbus prides itself on being a diverse city that welcomes all people, which is why nearly half of all refugees settled in Ohio are actually settled here in Franklin County. There are an estimated 873 refugee-owned businesses in the Columbus area, which employ 3,960 workers and support an estimated total of 21,273 jobs in the Columbus region. In addition to their economic contributions, local refugees add to our city's diverse cultural landscape through their native languages, arts, and food. The city of Columbus is proud of our history of welcoming refugees and is committed to supporting them and their families seeking a new beginning here in Columbus. Before I turn the microphone over and before I move for adoption, I want to thank each of you for being here today, and I want to acknowledge that we have members from Representative David Leland's office here today representing him and the work that he does and you all do alongside him in the State House to support refugees. I also want to thank Abdi Sufi and Director Carla Williams-Scott for their ongoing work on behalf of the city to support the refugee community. Are there any questions or comments for my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for adoption.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
Thank you. I'd like to turn the microphone to Ms. Nadia Kosvin, who is the Director of Us Together.
Thank you, Councilwoman Elizabeth Brown, for your leadership in this proclamation, and thank you, President Klein, and Councilmembers Diana Page, Harden, and Brown. Thank you very much for all the support that you provide to refugee communities here in Columbus. Every minute, 24 people are forced to flee their homes due to conflict and war. Every day, 24,000 people are fleeing their homes. And so the World Refugee Day commemorates the strength, the resilience, and the courage of millions of refugees worldwide. And while we talk about all this struggle and all the courage of refugees around the world, we also have to celebrate the, you know, the impact refugee communities have on communities that they join. I myself came as a refugee from Ukraine more than, almost 24 years ago, and now Columbus is my home. And on behalf of 20,000 refugees that were resettled right here in Columbus, and on behalf of more than 50,000 refugees that made the choice to come here to Columbus from other places they were resettled in, I want to thank the city of Columbus for its consistent support of refugee populations and of the communities and organizations that serve them. Thank you very much.
We already have passed the consent action portion of the agenda, so we'll now proceed with the second reading of 30-day tabled in emergency legislation. The first committee is the Finance Committee, and in President Protem Tyson's absence, Councilmember Harden will chair this committee. Chair Harden, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Klein. This evening in the Finance Committee, we have Resolution 0152X-2017 to adopt the 2018 tax budget and to authorize and direct the city auditor to submit said budget to the county and to declare it emergency. I'm going to move to table indefinitely.
The clerk has informed me that perhaps Mr. Dorian has some comments.
Thank you, Mr. President, and all councilmembers. This is the annual tax budget. The first requirement is that it be read, the title this evening, and table it until we will have a public hearing by council. Now, that public hearing was originally scheduled for June 26th, which will be next Monday night, but since you will not be meeting then and the following Monday, you'll not be meeting, so that public hearing, we have now advertised it publicly as for July the 10th. Usually a very, very brief hearing, a few minutes before the passage of the ordinance. This tax budget accomplishes two purposes. One, to set the tax rate, the property tax rate for the city, if you have to forget about other public entities, school districts, counties, and so forth. So it'll establish the rate for the city. That rate will remain the same. There'll be no recommended change in it. This will also make us eligible for sharing in the local government funds distributed by the state. That's a very, very chancy issue right now. We've put a lot of data together, assuming there will be no change, but by the time I speak to you in a couple of weeks, maybe there will be a change. So I would ask you to table the ordinance for this evening and be prepared to hear it on July the 10th. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dorian. Chair Harden, do you want to amend your motion for tabling to July 10th?
Yes, please. I've moved to amend to table to July 10th.
There is a, go ahead. That's been seconded. Clerk call the roll for tabling to July 10th.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
Tabled to July 10th.
Thank you so much. Next, I have ordinance 1501-2017 to amend the 2017 capital improvement budget to authorize the transfer of funds between projects within the Construction Management Capital Improvement Fund to authorize the Director of Finance and Management to enter into contract on behalf of the Office of Construction Management with general temperature control for HVAC system upgrades at the Columbus Public Health Facility, and to authorize the expenditure of $6,995,000 from the Construction Management Capital Improvement Fund and to declare an emergency. 1501-2017, this ordinance authorizes the Finance and Management Director to enter into contract on behalf of the Office of Management and Construction at general temperature control for HVAC at Department of Public Health located at 240 Parsons Avenue. This renovation project will include replacement of the chillers, cooling towers, pumps, control system, and other equipment associated with the cooling system for the building. This contract will also replace the hot water boilers for heating throughout the building. In addition, all air handlers will be upgraded and additional air handlers will be added to their overall system. Along with the new air handlers, variable air controls will be added to the system in specific areas. Overall, these HVAC renovations will improve the air quality of the facility, ensure its compliance with current health code requirements. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Second. Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
Council President, do I have to move to public service?
Of course.
All right. In public service committee, we have ordinance 1454-2017 to appropriate funds within Fund 4431 East Broad Commercial TIF to authorize the transfer of funds from Fund 4431 to Fund 7431. To appropriate fund within Fund 7431 to authorize the Director of Public Service to enter into a professional service contract with Tran Systems Corporation of Ohio for the arterial street rehabilitation East Broad Street widening project to authorize the expenditure of up to $1,400,000 from the Fund 7431 East Broad Commercial TIF to pay for this contract and to declare an emergency. This contract is for surveying, design, and technical expertise for the department to implement improvements to a one-mile portion of East Broad Street corridor from I-270 to the Outer Belt Street. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Second. Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
Next, I have 1521-2017 to authorize the City Attorney to file complaints in order to immediately appropriate and accept the remaining fees simple lesser real estate necessary to timely complete the Livingston Avenue, Phase C, 5th Street to Kennedy Drive Public Improvement Project, and to authorize the City Attorney to spend funds pursuant to an existing auditor certificate and to declare it emergency. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Second. Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
Could we go back to page six? From first reading, I have ordinance 1454-2017. I apologize. I have ordinance 1531-2017 to authorize the Director of Public Service to execute the documents necessary for the city to grant encroachment easements to 77 Hotel Partners LLC, Indus Hotels 77 LLC, for building foundations, peers at 77 East Nationwide Boulevard. That will, that project will move into the public right of way. This is a value of $2,000 was established for these encroachment easements. First, I move to waive second reading.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
And then I move for passage.
Second. Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
Next, I have 1532-2017 to vacate the right-of-ways identified as an approximate point 654-acre portion of the undeveloped 50-foot-wide east-west mirror place right-of-way, an approximate .1-acre portion of the unnamed east-west right-of-way south of Tulane Road between Homecroft Drive and Audubon Road, an approximate .114-acre portion of the unnamed north-south right-of-way south of Tulane Road, east of Homecroft Road, and an approximate .114-acre portion of the unnamed north-south right-of-way south of Tulane, west of Audubon Road, to facilitate improvements and enhancements to the city-owned property known as the Audubon Park surrounding these right-of-ways. The vacation of these right-of-ways will facilitate improvements and enhancements to the Audubon Park in the coming weeks. First, I request to waive second reading.
Second. Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
And move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
Last, I have 1568-2017 to authorize the Director of Department of Public Service to execute those documents necessary for the city to grant the encroachment easement to Nationwide Children's Hospital for the proposed building, shoring, and sunshade canopy that will project into the public right of way. The value of this encroachment is $1,000 for this easement. First, I move to waive second reading.
Second. Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
And move for passage.
Second. Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
That is all I have in my committee this evening. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Chair Harden. The next committee we're going to go to is Health and Human Services, and President Protem Tyson's absent, Councilmember Elizabeth Brown will be chairing the committee. Chair Brown, the floor is yours.
Thank you. So I would like to start with ordinance 1452-2017 in Health and Human Services to authorize the Director of Finance and Management to establish a purchase order with cribs for kids for the purchase of portable cribs for Columbus Public Health, to waive relevant provisions of the Columbus City Code relating to competitive bidding, and to authorize the expenditure of $12,398.45 from the Health Department Grants Fund, and to authorize the expenditure of $34,900. the expenditure of $34,955.63 from the Health Special Revenue Fund to pay the cost thereof, and to declare an emergency. And before I move for passage, I'd actually like to... This ordinance is being sponsored by President Protem Tyson and Councilmember Michael Stenziano. I'd like to yield the floor to Councilmember Stenziano.
Thank you, Madam Chair, President Klein. Really appreciate the city and the Department of Health's ongoing commitment to make sure that young people have a safe sleep environment, important for families, as we all know, and this purchase order will allow for 592 portable cribs. In 2016, 1,130 portable cribs were distributed to caregivers of infants without a safe sleep surface, and the need is that it's immediate that we are running out of the product, and so this will provide that allocation. Cribs for Kids is a not-for-profit agency, remains the sole provider of the GreatGo Pack and Play Portable Crib, which is determined to be one of the best out there, and so really appreciate our ongoing commitment, the department's ongoing commitment, to make sure that we're able to provide that product to families that need it. Along with the product, I always want to preach the ABCs alone on their back in a crib, and so making sure that this asset is provided to families in need is truly appreciated. So thank you for your leadership and for council's ongoing support.
Thank you, council member. Any other comments or questions? I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
President Klein, I would like to move to Economic Development, if that's all right. First, in Economic Development, we have ordinance 1371-2017 to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into a grant agreement with Columbus Franklin County Finance Authority to provide funding for urban redevelopment projects, to authorize the expenditure of $1 million from the Development Taxable Bond Fund, and to declare an emergency. This ordinance authorizes Columbus to enter into a grant agreement with the Columbus Franklin County Finance Authority to provide gap financing for urban redevelopment projects within the city. The long-term goal is to enable the CF/CFA to help fill funding gaps for the redevelopment of smaller-scale projects in traditional neighborhood corridors. Oftentimes, these projects encounter additional unforeseen costs which occur when bringing older buildings up to current code and current safety standards. This fund will allow CF/CFA to provide flexible funding to fill these cost gaps for targeted projects. Are there any comments or questions from my colleagues? Director Shoney, is there anything you want to add?
No, I think you did a great job. I'm sorry, President Klein, Chair Brown, you did an excellent job of summarizing that. Nothing to add.
Oh, that's so kind. Thank you. Seeing no comments, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
Thanks, President Klein. Now, I'd like to direct everyone back to page five for a couple of first readings that I have, also in Economic Development. The first is ordinance 1538-2017 to accept the application of Pine South Properties LLC for the annexation of certain territory containing plus or minus .24 acres in Hamilton Township. This ordinance approves the annexation of a piece of property by the City of Columbus. The Ohio's revised code stipulates that to be effective, city acceptance must take place a minimum of 60 days from the receipt by the city clerk of the approval notice from the county, but no later than 120 days after receipt of the notice. The city clerk received notice on April 13 of this year. Due to the cancellation of the meeting next week and no meeting the following week due to the Fourth of July, I'm requesting to waive second reading on this ordinance due to these time constraints. I request to waive second reading.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
And I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
Next, we have ordinance 1539-2017 to accept the application of Frank and Miranda Quintana for the annexation of certain territory containing approximately .7 acres in Sharon Township. The city clerk also received notice of this annexation from the county on April 13, and it is under the same timeline as the previous annexation. So without seeing any questions, I request to waive second reading.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
And I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
Next, we have ordinance 1540-2017 to accept the application of Jason and Stephanie Co. for the annexation of certain territory containing approximately 2.36 acres in Franklin Township. The city clerk received notice of this annexation also on April 13, and it is under the same timeline as the previous two annexations. So I would like to request to waive second reading.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
And finally, among the first readings in Economic Development that I would like to bring up, we have ordinance 1555-2017 to determine that satisfactory provision has been made for the public improvement needs of parcels within certain tax increment financing districts previously established by the city to include additional public improvements to be made in support of urban redevelopment within the city. The Ohio General Assembly recently changed the rules for how cities in Ohio can utilize tax increment financing districts with the passage of House Bill 384. The changes went into effect in April of this year. This ordinance provides the Department of Development with the ability to take advantage of these new rules, which will help leverage current TIF agreements to help fund public improvement and urban redevelopment projects throughout the city. This ordinance provides additional flexibility to the city's efforts to invest in its neighborhoods in line with community needs. Are there any questions from my colleagues or any comment from the director? I would like to move to waive second reading.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
And I'd like to move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
Thank you. That's all I have in my committees, President Klein.
Thank you, Chair Brown. We'll now go to the Technology Committee. It's chaired by Councilmember Stenziano. Chair Stenziano, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Klein. Tonight in the Technology Committee, bring ordinance 1425-2017 to amend the 2017 capital improvement budget to authorize the transfer of appropriation and cash between projects to authorize the Director of Finance and Management on behalf of the Department of Technology to associate all general budget reservations resulting from this ordinance with the appropriate state term schedule with Brown Enterprise Solutions LLC and with OnX USA LLC from a pre-existing universal term contract purchase agreement for the purchase of Splunk Software Licensing, software maintenance and support, professional services, training, and computer equipment, hardware, maintenance, and support services to authorize expenditure of $708,338.33 from the Department of Technology Information Services Division Information Services Bond Fund and to declare an emergency. The Department of Technology has a need to purchase Splunk Enterprise, Splunk Enterprise Security, and Splunk IT Service Intelligent Software to meet evolving security, compliance, and operational requirements. This purchase will provide real-time event management and correlation, anomaly detection, and high-performance, large-scale historical data analysis necessary to address security and availability needs of the city. Emergency action is requested in order to meet the timeline needed to ensure that the necessary purchase orders for software licenses, hardware equipment, and services are established in a timely manner in order to get the project started immediately and replace the existing security system prior to expiration of the current contract. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
Next is ordinance 1445-2017. This ordinance authorizes the Director of Finance and Management on behalf of the Department of Technology to associate all general budget reservations resulting from this ordinance with the appropriate existing universal term contract purchase agreement with Advizex Technologies for EMC Hardware and Software Support Services, and to authorize the expenditure of $354,914.91 from the Department of Technology Information Services Division Information Services Operating Fund and to declare an emergency. This ordinance will provide for hardware and software support services needed for the city's storage area network. These services are required to ensure reliable operation of the city's critical data storage infrastructure. An emergency exists in the daily operation of the Department of Technology, and that is immediately necessary for the immediate preservation of the public health, peace, property, safety, and welfare. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
That's all I have in Technology. If I can move to Public Utilities. Tonight in Public Utilities, I bring forward ordinance 1503-2017 to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into a guaranteed maximum reimbursement agreement with Hallmark Dublin Road LLC pursuant to Section 186 of the Columbus City Charter for a sewer extension as part of the Old Dublin Tribune Sanitary Sewer Extension Project, the Division of Sewage and Drainage, to authorize the transfer within and the expenditure of up to $1,9,729 from the Sanitary General Obligation Bond Fund, to authorize an amendment to the 2017 capital improvements budget and declare an emergency. The project was initiated due to increased interest in redeveloping the former Stone Quarry site, as well as providing sanitary services to currently unsewered parcels along Dublin Road. This project will allow those properties to connect to the city's sanitary system and will increase water quality in the area by eliminating their household sewage treatment systems. The work will consist of constructing approximately 1,300 feet of sanitary sewer along Tribune Road and Old Dublin Road in the West Olentangie Planning Area. Upon passage of this ordinance, the City of Columbus will agree to pay guaranteed maximum reimbursement to Hallmark Dublin Road LLC, who has agreed to construct the improvements at their cost and then obtain reimbursement from the city. Funding for the reimbursement is provided by the Department of Public Utilities. An emergency designation is requested for this legislation in order to comply with the project's timeline. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
That's all I have in my committees this evening.
Thank you, Chair Stenziano. The next committee is the Rules and Reference Committee. I chair that committee. We have three pieces of legislation to be considered tonight in that committee, two of which are being brought forward by Councilmember Mitch Brown. So Chair Brown, I will turn the floor over to you.
Thank you, Council President. Ordinance 1497-2017 to repeal Chapter 597 of the Columbus City Codes and to enact new Chapter 597, updating the provisions for the licensing of alarm dealers and users in the City of Columbus. This section of the code has not been altered or updated since 1998, except for a fee increase in 2003, and needed to be updated in regards to two key areas. First, to update the current code in order to include new technologies in the alarm industry. Secondly, the sheer number of alarm systems have increased dramatically and has led to an excessive number of false alarms. This update is aimed at decreasing the number of false alarms, which drains public safety forces' resources and impacts the response for true emergencies. If there are no questions, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
Thank you. Also, we have ordinance 1589-2017 to amend various sections of Chapter 525 of the Columbus City Code, updating the provisions for charitable solicitations, licensing in the City of Columbus. This recommended code change streamlines the current charitable solicitation licensing process by minimizing the unneeded complexity of the charitable solicitation board and empowering the Director of Public Safety or his designee to issue the license based on the merit of applications. If there are no questions, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
Council President, on both of these items, there have been multiple public hearings in order to educate the public.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. I believe that there is a piece in first reading that Chair Page wishes to consider, so I will turn the floor over to you.
Thank you, President Klein. If we can all go back to page eight, I would like to read ordinance 1350-2017, and it is to amend Section 4103.14, Fees and Assessments of the Columbus City Code Title 41, to allow revenue of the Department of Building and Zoning Services to be used for education and career-based training programs in partnership with the construction industry and Columbus City Codes. And this is a really exciting program that the Department of Building and Zoning Services has been working with in conjunction with the construction industry and Columbus City Schools, and it's to really reinvigorate our young people, to get interested in the construction trades and to provide training in the schools, and also to have that pipeline that we need to continue that industry. So Director, do you have any additional comments?
Councilmember Page, President Klein, and other members of council, yes, this code change just merely clarifies that we'll only be able to use those revenues collected by Building and Zoning Services for educational purposes, as Councilmember Page indicated. And we're also excited, under the leadership of Mayor Ginther, to be able to invest in these educational programs and partnerships, especially with Columbus City Schools, is going to be very valuable, as you said, to the future of folks who might be interested in joining the trades industry for a career path, so we're very excited. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Are there any additional comments from my colleagues? I would first like to request to waive second reading.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
I now move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
Thank you. That's all I have, President Klein.
Thank you, Chair Page. Any other business to come before council? We do have zoning at 6:30. We have a couple non-agenda speakers that we will take upon adjournment of Regular Meeting Number 33. Any other business? Seeing none, can I get a motion to adjourn? Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
We stand adjourned with Regular Meeting Number 33. We'll take non-agenda speakers shortly, and we'll reconvene at 6:30 for zoning. Regular Meeting Number 34 will now come to order. Can I get a motion to dispense with the reading of the journal? Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
We'll now go to the Zoning Committee. Councilmember Page serves as the chair of that committee. All members serve on that committee. Chair Page, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Klein. Before beginning our agenda this evening, I'll briefly explain the rules of council as pertaining to speaking before council on zonings and variances. We permit three speakers on each side, three proponents and three opponents, and we ask that you limit your remarks to three minutes on each side, and we provide an opportunity for rebuttal from the applicant. On the advice of the City Attorney's Office, we ask that anyone here this evening who wishes to speak either for or against any council variance, including staff, to please stand and raise your right hand to be sworn in. I swear or affirm to tell the truth and nothing but the truth. Please answer, I will.
I will.
Thank you. Our first variance is 1478-2017 to rezone 3575 Cleveland Avenue, 43224, being approximately .58 acres located on the west side of Cleveland Avenue, approximately 210 feet south of Elmore Avenue, from CPD Commercial Plan Development District to CPD Commercial Plan Development District. The applicant is Central Ohio Transit Authority. The proposed use is a Cota park-and-ride. The city department's recommendation is approval. North London Area Commission's recommendation is approval. I now like to ask for staff presentation.
Good evening. The site is currently developed with a drive-through, carryout, and self-serve car wash and is zoned in the CPD Commercial Plan Development District. The applicant proposes the CPD Commercial Plan Development District to permit a Cota park-and-ride development in conjunction with adjacent properties that are in Clinton Township. The development text will permit only the Cota park-and-ride use on the site with provisions for setbacks, access, buffering, and lighting. Variances for reduced front, rear, and side parking setback lines, parking lot drive aisle width, minimum parking lot trees, minimum soil area around trees, headlight screening, maneuvering, and parking space requirements are included mainly because the parking lot will be divided by parcel lines. The site is located within the North London Neighborhood Plan Amendment, which recommends community mixed use for this location. The proposed use is compatible with land use recommendation of the plan, which also encourages public transit, pedestrian, and bicycle use, which are supported by this proposed development. Therefore, staff's recommendation is for approval, and I would be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff? Is the applicant present or the applicant's representative? Would you like to make any additional comments? Thank you. If there are no further questions or comments, I would like to move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
1481-2017 to grant a variance from the provisions of Sections 3356.03(c)(4), permitted uses, and 331249, minimum numbers of parking spaces required of the Columbus City Codes for the property located at 943 East Freiburg Avenue, 43206, to conform an existing single-unit dwelling with no off-street parking spaces in the (c)(4) commercial district. The applicant is Pine Hill Investments. The proposed use... The proposed use is a single-unit dwelling. The City Department's recommendation is approval. Columbus Southside Area Commission's recommendation is approval. I'd like to ask for staff presentation.
The requested variance will conform an existing single-unit dwelling in the (c)(4) Commercial District. A council variance is necessary because residential uses are only permitted above specified commercial uses in the (c)(4) District. The site is located within the boundaries of the Southside Plan, which recommends neighborhood commercial land uses for this location. The dwelling has been long established on this lot and is consistent with the residential uses that are prevalent in the surrounding neighborhood. A hardship exists because the non-conforming nature of the site precludes financing options. A parking space reduction for two required spaces is included in the request and it's due to an existing condition. Approval of this request will not add a new or incompatible use to the area. Therefore, staff's recommendation is for approval. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff? Is the applicant or the applicant's representative present and like to make any additional comments? Thank you. I would now like to move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
1483-2017, to rezone 510 LaZelle Road, 43240, being approximately 15.08 acres located on the north side of LaZelle Road, approximately 230 feet east of St. Kuz Boulevard, from LC4 Limited Commercial District and CPD Commercial Plan Development District to LARLD Limited Apartment Residential District. The applicant is NP Limited Partnership. The proposed use is a multi-unit residential development. The City Department's recommendation is approval. Far North Columbus Community Coalition's recommendation is approval. I now like to ask for staff presentation.
The site consists of one undeveloped parcel zoned in the LC4 Limited Commercial District and CPD Commercial Plan Development District. The requested LARLD Limited Apartment Residential District will allow a multi-unit residential development. The limitation text addresses landscaping and screening for the adjacent commercial properties to the north and west, traffic access, open space, and pedestrian connectivity commitments. The site is within the boundaries of the Far North Area Plan, which recommends medium-density residential uses for this location. The proposed LARLD Limited Apartment Residential District is consistent with the land use recommendations of the plan and is compatible with the surrounding land uses and development pattern along LaZelle Road. Therefore, staff's recommendation is for approval. I would be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff? Is the applicant or the applicant's representative present and like to make any additional comments? Thank you. I would now like to move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
1485-2017, to amend ordinance number 1885-2016, passed July 25, 2016, by repealing Section 3 and replacing it with a new Section 3, thereby modifying the CPD text regarding building height and replace the CPD plan and building elevations for property located at 136 Parsons Avenue, 43215. The applicant is Parsons Park 2 LLC. The proposed use is a mixed-use commercial and apartment residential development. The City Department's recommendation is approval. Near East Area Commission's recommendation is approval. I now ask for staff presentation.
Ordinance 1885-2016, passed July 25, 2016, rezoned 1.08 acres from the LARLD Apartment Residential District to the CPD Commercial Plan Development District for a mixed-use building containing approximately 2,000 square feet of commercial space and 78 apartment units. That legislation permitted an increased building height of 42 feet with a commitment to building elevation drawings. This legislation will amend ordinance 1885-2016 by modifying the CPD text and plan to increase the height of a portion of the proposed building from 42 feet to 52 feet, revise the arrangement of uses on the ground floor, and replaces the building elevation drawings. The applicant has also filed an amendment to council variance CV16-017 to allow, instead of four ground floor residential units, they are now proposing two ground floor residential units and accessory residential uses such as a leasing office or fitness center. The modifications were reviewed by the Planning Division of the Development Department to ensure that the proposal remains consistent with the land use and design-related criteria of the Near East Area Plan and Old Town Quarter Economic Development Strategy, both of which recommended mixed-use commercial and residential uses for this location. The Near East Area Commission also reviewed this proposal and recommended approval. This amendment does not alter any other requirements established by the original ordinance 1885-2016. Therefore, staff's recommendation is for approval, and I would be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff? Councilmember Mitch Brown.
Thank you Chair Page. Ms. Pine, parking, what was the issue with regards to parking? How are they going to handle that, given the fact you've got mixed use?
Nothing has changed with what was proposed with parking from the original CPD District, Councilmember Brown. But I can tell you that this request does include a parking space reduction of 19 spaces. But like I said, it's not an increase from what was approved last year.
Thank you.
Are there any additional questions? Is the applicant or the applicant's representative present and like to make any additional comments? Are there any additional questions? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
And we have a companion variance for the same property, 1486-2017, to grant a variance from the provisions of Sections 3356.03 permitted uses and 3361.02 permitted uses for the property located at 136 Parsons Avenue, 43215, to permit ground floor residential units and accessory residential uses in the CPD Commercial Plan Development District, and to repeal ordinance number 1886-2016, passed July 25, 2016. The applicant is Parsons Park 2 LLC. The proposed use is four ground floor residential units. The City Department's recommendation is approval. Near East Area Commission's recommendation is approval. Are there any additional questions or comments? Councilmember Harden?
Not a question, but just a comment. I just want to say how much I appreciate this project, actually. It is developing in the Near East Side of Columbus, and has taken into account the neighborhood and the existing infrastructure around there. I'm just really excited to see this come about and see the good things that are happening along Parsons Avenue in the Near East Side. So thank you for bringing this before us.
Thank you Councilmember Harden. There are no additional questions or comments, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
1489-2017, to grant a variance from the provisions of Sections 3332.039 (R)(4) Residential District and 331249, minimum numbers of parking spaces required for the property located at 2818 Joyce Avenue, 43211, to permit a shared living facility with reduced development standards in the R)(4) Residential District. The applicant is National Youth Advocate Program. The proposed use is a shared living facility. The City Department's recommendation is approval. Northeast Area Commission's recommendation is approval. I now like to ask for staff presentation.
The site is developed with a four-unit dwelling in the R)(4) Residential District. The requested council variance will permit the dwelling unit to be used as a shared living facility. A variance to reduce the minimum number of parking spaces is also included in this request. The site is located within the boundaries of the Northeast Area Plan, which recommends low-density residential land uses for this location. The request is supportable because the shared living facility will be established within an existing dwelling with no exterior modifications to the appearance of the dwelling, providing supportive housing for a maximum of 10 adolescent residents with supervision from a minimum of two staff members at all times. I would also like to point out that the site directly to the north is also being utilized in the same fashion. Therefore, staff's recommendation is for approval, and I would be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff? Is the applicant or the applicant's representative present and like to make any additional comments? I don't see anyone. We do have a speaker speaking against this variance. I might like to ask Ms. Linda Jones to come down to the podium. Ms. Jones, again, you have three minutes. If you could let us know, again, your name and any organizations that you are representing. And once you get done, you can start your comments, and thank you for coming to council this evening.
Hello, my name is Linda Jones. I'm a private citizen. I represent no agency. And just tell me when you're ready for me to start. Okay, the National Youth Advocate Program, aka NIAF location, located at 2824 Joyce Avenue, has been nothing short of a disaster since they moved into my neighborhood. When there have been problems with the women residing at the center involving community residents, NIAF has not been very helpful, yet they say, if you have any problems with the residents, call them. One of the girls threatened to beat up one of my neighbors last year. Not all the women. This is not reflective of all that who's there. However, evidently, they don't have an effective vetting process to weed out the ones who are more violent than others. Also, they have no loitering on their building, and all night, they go up and down Joyce Avenue, hollering at the top of their lungs. The girls hook up with about, you know, about five or six boys, and they go all up and down the streets. They're loud, and they drop trash in everybody's yard. All the while, the staff members they make reference to, they never come out for that. The only time that the staff deal with any problems is when the destruction is on their property. And they have to call the police frequently, and the police are so, they're known to the police, and so they automatically send from two to six police cars when they come. I live exactly across the street. This is not hearsay testimony. This is what I've seen with my own eyes. I don't see them trying to call the girls in and say, you guys are making too much noise. You get none of that. They're awful, they're horrible neighbors, no one would want them in their neighborhood. They are nothing short of a nuisance property, and I'm requesting that you deny the rezoning of this property.
Thank you Ms. Jones. You have an additional 40 seconds if you would like to use those?
No. I think I got it.
Well, thank you so much for your comments, Ms. Jones. Councilmember Stenziano?
Thank you Madam Chair. Ms. Jones, just curious if you shared those concerns with the Area Commission in the process?
I missed that meeting. I did get the notification, but I was sick, and I did not want to not come tonight because I didn't want anybody to think that it was totally okay. And it's not, I would have had more people with me, but they were sick and they could not come. And so, everybody in the neighborhood is complaining, and, you know, like I said, they're yapping and screaming and, you know, we shouldn't, as neighborhood individuals, we shouldn't have to call the police on this. They're just like having a nuisance bar in the neighborhood. That's the way they are to us, that's the way they come across. Now, like I said, there are some very nice girls in there, and I do speak to them, but when they get a problem, one in there, they leave them in there way too long.
Councilmember Mitch Brown?
Chair Page, part of the question is, do we know how many times you've had to call the police to respond? If we're responding with six cars, that's an issue that needs to be addressed.
Last week, that happened last week, and it wasn't only just the six police cars, it was an emergency squad as well.
Is there any information, Ms. Pine? Would we have any information with regards to the complaints that have been filed on this particular location for law enforcement and/or EMS to have to respond?
No, I did not know that. I could have gotten that information for you, but if you would like, I would be more than happy to research and get that information. It should not be too hard to obtain.
Thank you Ms. Jones. Ms. Pine from the City, do you have any information with regards to this issue?
Yes, Councilmember Brown, when we prepare this information for review by staff divisions, it is forwarded to police, and if there are any comments, they inform staff and then we inform the applicant. We receive no comments from Public Safety for this particular application.
Chair Page, before the decision is made, would it be possible that I could find out more information on this location before we actually move into legislation, or do you feel compelled that we should address the zoning right now?
Well, Councilmember Mitchell Brown, I am actually going to be inclined to move to table this variant. There is also a motion to amend to emergency, and there is no one here from the organization or the representative to speak as to why they would like us to amend the ordinance to emergency. So in order to give them the opportunity to address counsel for that as well, I would like to move to table this variance.
Second.
To our next meeting, which will be July 10, 2017.
Chair, you could table it indefinitely and bring it up at your discretion, or we can table till July 10?
I'm comfortable with July 10.
Okay. The motion is made for tabling this particular ordinance to July 10. Has it been seconded with a definitive date? Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
This is tabled until July 10.
Thank you President Klein. And our final variance this evening, 1508-2017, to rezone 2090 IKEA Way, 43240, being approximately 7.15 acres located on the north side of IKEA Way, approximately 1,170 feet west of East Powell Road, from LC4 Limited Commercial District to LC4 Limited Commercial District. The applicant is Polaris 91 LLC. The proposed use is to update setbacks for a commercial development. The City Department's recommendation is approval. Far North Columbus Community Coalition's recommendation is approval. I now like to ask for staff presentation.
The site is undeveloped and zoned LC4 Limited Commercial District. The requested LC4 district proposes adjustments to the height and setback restrictions to be consistent with adjacent LC4 districts in the area. The proposed limitation text otherwise maintains the customary use, height, building, and parking setback, access, screening, landscaping, building design, lighting, and parkland dedication commitments. The site is located within the planning area of the Far North Plan, which recommends regional mixed uses for this location. City staff considers the updated setback and height standards to be appropriate and consistent with other nearby LC4 districts. Therefore, staff's recommendation is for approval, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Are there any questions for staff? I have a question. Could you briefly go over some of the uses that are currently permitted in LC4?
Councilmember Page, a limited (c)(4) district is just a (c)(4) district that has use restrictions. So this particular application, and I believe it just carries over the original, when the Polaris area was zoned back in 1991, it carries over the same use restrictions that were approved when this LC4 district was originally approved. So right now, it does prohibit off-permiss graphics, let's see here, used car lots, except in conjunction with new car sales, outside sales of items that are, unless those that are offered for sale, like with a home supply store, and storage of hazardous wastes are not permitted, and halfway houses are not permitted. But other than that, all other (c)(4) commercial uses are permitted.
Thank you. Is the applicant or the applicant's representative present and like to make any comments? Thank you Mr. Perry for coming down. If you could let us know who you're representing.
President Klein, zoning Chair Page, and all members of council, my name is Dave Perry. I am here tonight as agent on the rezoning for Polaris 91 LLC. With me tonight also is Mr. Franz Geiger, who's the Managing Director of NP Limited and also Polaris 91 LLC. This zoning is to rezone from LC4 to LC4. In 1991, this is the last piece of Polaris from the 1991 zoning. And if I can ask you for a moment to take yourself back to 1991, Southern Delaware County, Orange County, Orange Township. Good point. Southern Delaware County, Orange Township, no commercial development, marginal housing development, no interchange. A 1,200-acre commercial zoning was passed by the council at that time. What has happened since 1991 is a major destination-oriented commercial use. Two interchanges have been built, two arterial rights-of-way, major housing development has occurred in Southern Delaware County, in part because of the Polaris development. And so, we're at 2017 with a setback standard established in 1991. And in the context of 1991, in rural Southern Delaware County, these standards may have made sense. This is the last piece along the north property line of the Polaris development with these standards. There have been numerous zonings, rezonings since then that have, either due to NP Limited acquiring additional property, or rezoning for other developments that do not have these standards. These are extraordinarily restrictive standards, in my opinion, even for 1991. But what they do is establish a quantity of setback rather than a quality of setback. The quantity of setback limits the height and setback of buildings in relation to the north property line of this seven acres being rezoned. There's no quality to the current ordinance setback. And by that, I mean, there's no buffering standard along the north property line, there's no screening standard, and the parking setback, for example, would default to the current code requirement of four feet. What we have, what we have there today that is not a requirement of the ordinance, is an enormous mound built by the developers of the amphitheater. And so, along the entire north property line of this site before you tonight, we have an earthen mound in the area of 16 to 20 feet tall by itself. We have extensive tree growth on it, and we have an eight-foot-tall fence on top of the mound that, again, was placed by the amphitheater developers. There is no place in Columbus that this height and mass of mound exists. What we are proposing to do is change the quantity of setback for the quality of setback. The grades, for example, on the, there are two homeowners to the north of this site, and the grades of the property, their grades are below the site of the Polaris site. So not only do we have the mound and trees and fence, but we have houses that are at a lower grade than this site, anyway. And I believe staff has some photos of, from the site in the presentation? There we go. Yeah, here we go. Upper left is on the former amphitheater site. You get a sense of the height of the mound. The other three photos are on the north side of the mound, which is still NP Limited property. But you get a sense of the grade difference and the height difference and the fence. This is an extraordinary buffer. What this zoning does is, it does change the 1991 standards, but it replaces those standards with this as a requirement. Through this process, every single review body for this rezoning has supported this request. The staff supports it. The FNCCC community group supports it. I personally walked this mound with the FNCCC members, and they were astonished at the height of it and looking north down the slope at the two houses that are to the north. And the Development Commission voted to support this request. So with that, I know you have an opposition speaker, and Mr. Geiger and I are prepared to respond to that speaker and also any questions you have. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Perry? President Klein.
Mr. Perry, you alluded to this, but could either you or Ms. Pine kind of succinctly talk about what the differences, the material differences are between the current LC4 and the new LC4?
Certainly, I can address that.
And why, is it have to do with the setback? Is that, at the end of the day, what this is about?
The, yes. The current ordinance limits, has extremely restrictive standards. From zero to 150 feet, buildings are limited to 35 feet tall and one story. From 150 to 300 feet, buildings are limited to 35 feet and two stories. And then beyond 300 feet, they're limited to 60 feet and three stories. There is no other place in Polaris or citywide that I'm aware of that those standards exist. And were they appropriate, again, in 1991 in Southern Delaware County rural Orange Township with a proposed enormous commercial development at that time? They may have been. But there's a problem with those standards being, those standards being so unusual for today, and number two, because those standards match nothing else in Polaris. There have been subsequent, many subsequent rezonings since 1991 that do not have those standards, including the abutting property to this tract immediately abutting to the west.
Thank you. Are there any additional questions for Mr. Perry at this time? Thank you, Mr. Perry. We have a speaker slip for this variance for Mr. Franz Geiger. Is he going to speak as well, or are you speaking on his behalf?
Your pleasure. Go ahead with the opposition speaker.
Okay, thank you. We do have a speaker who's speaking against this variance, Mr. Jonathan McDonald. Mr. McDonald, welcome to council. Again, you have three minutes. If you could let us know who you're representing.
I'm representing Mr. Smith, as well as Robert Byers, the adjacent property owners.
Mr. McDonald, I know you're setting up, but you'll need to use a podium.
Yes, yes. I'll come over there. So, I understand I have three minutes. If it pleases the council, let me just set this up so I don't have to belabor any time. So, may it please the council, President Klein, to answer your question, it's more than just the setback line, it's the height as well. It affects the entire surrounding communities. And I'll get straight to the point. I'm asking that you deny the applicant's request. If not deny, postpone or table indefinitely until further information and data is provided to all council persons. Now, I understand that the applicant here, as well as the zoning and planning commission, states that, well, the previous board approved this application, so therefore, this board should also approve. If I'm not mistaken, Mr. Perry stated that every review board approved it. And then he goes on to reference that there's buffering standards, it's not a requirement, and it's an enormous mound, an earth mound, and that there's no place in Columbus, to his recollection, that exists. It's very important that he made that reference because that is exactly why, at the original Far North Coalition, that there was no opposition. Because during that walkthrough, Mr. Perry or representatives from Polaris 91 threatened to destroy that mound if there's any voice of opposition. That is why, until the zoning and planning commission, was there any opposition. It wasn't until it was brought to my attention that, wait, a prospective developer threatened to detrimentally harm your adjacent property if you waive your right to vocalize opposition. That is when my firm stepped in, and that is when we approached the zoning and planning commission on Carroll Avenue. Now, I understand that there's a lot of development going on in Polaris, the surrounding area. I get that. But the focus of this hearing should focus on the neighboring residents, not the highway, not competing businesses, but homeowners who've been invested in their community over 10 years. Now, if you could, please place the picture where Mr. Perry states that the mound is at a certain level, if you could. Our position is that is actually inaccurate. He took pictures from the actual floor or the ground level of the backyard. Both Mr. Byers' as well as Mr. and Mrs. Smith's property is well above that. They have to decline downstairs to get to the backyard. Point being, if you can see in this exhibit, to the top right, this is from the street. You're looking through the trees, past this eight-foot, 10-foot, 16-foot, whatever fence or barrier. Additionally, back, the back building of both property owners is glass. There's more at stake than just the height of a building or the line restrictions. No, if you put a 160-foot building, they're going to be able to look in the back of the bedroom of both of my clients. But yet, you haven't heard from the line of sight that was wrongfully displayed to both council, strike that, not council, but commissions, both of them, inaccurate. You haven't heard the light pollution that's going to occur and affect these homeowners if you take away the current restrictions, the height restrictions. You haven't heard the decimal ratings. What is the sound pollution that's going to be created when you push back the line further to their property when dumpster trucks show up at 4:00 a.m.? You haven't heard any of that. Because honestly, if I was their proponent, you wouldn't hear that either, because no one wants to hear that.
Mr. McDonald, if you could wrap up your arguments, please. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, I respectfully request that you decline this application, or you table it, and even just check with the prior Far North Coalition. Ask them to see if these threats were possibly made. If you don't do this, this will happen. Council persons, that is not the way legislation should be passed, or quite frankly, even entertained. I ask that you do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now allow three minutes for rebuttal from Mr. Perry, as well as his client, Mr. Geiger.
Members of council, my name is Franz Geiger. I'm managing director of NP Limited Partnership. Thank you for listening tonight. I wanted to correct one thing. This current zoning, there's a four-foot parking and maneuvering setback. So you could pull cars right up to, within four feet of the property line, okay? We are creating an undeveloped area of 50 feet. It's a no-build zone. So this mound, which was referenced in the prior hearing at Far North, in which the property owners were represented by an attorney, nobody said that they couldn't speak. They spoke. There was no intimidation, and there was no threats. But what we did say is this, is imagine if you had a property that didn't have that mound there, okay? And the developer says, "I'm going to build a 17-foot-high mound. I'm going to put an eight-foot fence on it. I'm going to plant 30-foot trees on top of that mound." That'd be pretty reasonable, wouldn't it? Guess what? That's what exists. We said we're going to leave that in place versus removing it. We could remove it. It's not required by our current zoning, so we could remove it. Instead, we're leaving it in place. And that's a significant issue. The other thing I wanted to tell you is that my partners, Bob Wyler and Don Kelly, we've worked on Polaris since 1991. The development, I think most could concede, has been done very well. We have protective covenants. We have a design review committee, and we work very hard, and we take a lot of pride in the quality of the development. This area is going to be developed in the same way. And I believe that's why we've had the trust of the Far North, is because we've done what we've said we're going to do. The other thing is, is that this particular area is going to be consistent with what has been rezoned. And the tree canopy here is very significant. Six months out of the year, it's fully, the foliage, it's totally opaque. You could argue maybe six months out of the year, there are no leaves. But the canopies are very dense as well of the trees. And so, this is a very unique situation. In all the years that we've been doing this, I've never, and I've been on planning commissions and zoning boards, I've never had an applicant be willing to do this. The other thing is, and this is significant, maybe not relevant, but just to show you the intent of our side, was we were willing to buy these properties at the current market value, because we always hear, "Well, we won't, we don't want, you're going to hurt our property value." There's no reason for us to want these properties. We don't want them, because we can't redevelop them. We would keep them as residential properties. But we've said, "We don't believe that our development is going to hurt your value, and we will buy them at the fair market value." And that offer has been out there. So we have worked with the property owners in good faith, and we feel that this zoning application is more than reasonable, especially compared to the existing conditions and what exists today. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Perry or Mr. Geiger? Councilmember Stenziano.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just quickly, if you could speak to the concern that there was a faulty line study that was presented. I've also heard about other inaccuracies that, you know, the Far North folks didn't have the complete information, and then it didn't come up till it was too late that another vote couldn't be taken. Just curious, kind of in the history of the project, how that's been addressed or where that concern is being raised from.
The Far North Coalition has a three-step process. First meeting is just presentation and discussion. The homeowners were represented by an attorney at that meeting, a different attorney, but they were represented by an attorney. Then the Far North Coalition has an onsite meeting, and we walked the site, we walked the mound. The lawyer's client said to me that, said to me at that meeting that the mound is required. And I said, "It is not." And he asked me to explain. There was no threat of anything. I just, I simply said, "The Polaris ordinance does not require this mound." And then we went through the permitting process and other things that, by which he reached that conclusion, but it is not required by the zoning ordinance. I'm not, you know, I appear at the Far North Coalition frequently, and I'm not aware of them saying they were confused or didn't have the facts or anything else. So it was a unanimous vote for approval, so it's hard to get from there to misunderstanding the situation. We have done sightline studies, and these are examples of them. We took them, we took them based on, this ordinance establishes three setback areas. 50 feet is the existing mound. It remains undisturbed. And in fact, since the Development Commission, NP Limited, has repaired the fence and planted a considerable number of additional evergreen trees on the south side of the mound. If you'll look at your photos for a moment, the upper-left slide is the NP Limited side of the mound. Actually, the whole mound belongs to NP Limited, but it's the interior side. The tree cover is largely at the top of the mound and north, but since the Development Commission hearing, NP Limited has planted quite a number of evergreen trees on the south side also. What we looked at, because this ordinance also establishes gradations of height and setback, but what we looked at was site studies prepared by a surveyor of setback at 50 feet, 75 feet, and 150 feet. Those are the gradations of setback that this ordinance establishes. And the one thing I want to point out in response to the lawyer's statement is that we had the surveyor take the sightline off the second-floor window of the house. Nobody's down here looking up. If anything, the lower-level windows here would provide a greater sightline obstruction because you are lower than this point. So these sightline exhibits were prepared from the second floor of the adjacent house for 35-foot, 60-foot, or 75-foot and 150-foot setback lines. And it shows the mound, the fence, and the tree canopy. These were also shown. The Development Commission also reviewed these, and again, they've been out as material on the application from the beginning.
I just want to clarify, and I think you understand this, in case you don't, that the picture, if that's, you have that on your screen, the one in the upper-right corner. And what's significant about that, that fence, on one side is the old amphitheater side. On this other side, our property line is actually closer to where that tree line is. So our property line is on the other side of the fence that exists today. And that's what I was saying, that if that was not there, we would have cars, basically, in the property owner's backyard. Is that appropriate? No. But this mound makes sure that that does.
But this mound makes sure that that doesn't happen, and that's why we think this is a real asset to keep it in place.
President Klein.
So I'm a little confused. Under the new zoning request with the sightline study that you just showed us, if I, I'm trying to see it, no pun intended, with the sightline study, but it shot off the second floor of the residents whom are objecting to this zoning, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And if you, the line that is extending above the sightline of the tree, and it kind of continues, I'm guessing to the left of the tree is the, my left is the fence? Is that what that, is that?
Fence, yes.
Okay, that's the tree. What's to the left of, what's that right there? What is that?
That's, that's an example of a 35-foot-tall building.
And this zoning does or does not allow anything greater than 35 feet at that particular point right there?
At this location.
Because clearly, at some point with sightline, that you can build a tall enough building, we will intersect the sightline.
That's correct. This ordinance establishes the 50-foot setback that the mound is retained in. And between 50 and 75 feet, 35-foot-tall building, 75 feet to 150, 60-foot-tall building, and beyond 150 feet, it defaults to the height district established in the ordinance, which is 110. So at, this is a depiction at 35.
Okay, so just one second. That's the depiction at 35, and so there is no intersection with that picture?
Correct.
If I see it correctly? Okay.
There is no sightline intersection. Correct. Okay. This drawing, same drawing, same second-floor window, same mound, same trees, this is at the 60-foot line.
Okay. And there is no intersection there, right? That's why I make sure I see, there is no intersection there. Okay.
I'm sorry, am I blocking your vision? Okay. When we get to the 150-foot setback line, at the 150-foot setback line, a hypothetical building, 27 feet of the top of a hypothetical building could be seen, but not all of this. If you're seeing like this. Yeah, if you're looking out the second-floor window of the house.
Okay. I just wanted a better explanation. I appreciate you walking me through that.
Thank you, President Klein. Councilwoman Elizabeth Brown.
I guess this is probably actually a question for staff or for Chair Page. Should I wait on that? So this is in their application, these details, which means if 15 years from now, 10 years from now, the applicant, the property owner, no longer wants this mound, they would have to come back to the city and request to take the mound down? Is that correct?
Councilmember Brown, it would be a rezoning request to change the buffering and setback standards that are within this ordinance before you tonight.
So it would have to go back through the whole process of the community council and coming to council in order for any changes from what they've asked here today to occur?
Yes.
Okay.
Councilmember Mitch Brown.
Chair Page, I have to see the area. I can't quite, the pictures and all are fine, but for me, to have to go out and see the circumstances to get a view from the individual's home, if they could do that, then I would feel more comfortable if I got a chance to do that before I make a decision about how I'm going to vote, just so you all understand.
Are there any additional questions or comments? Councilmember Senziano?
I guess one more, and somewhat actually, I think, are relevant to the zoning, but you mentioned in your presentation, are you all still negotiating with the homeowners for the possible purchase of those properties? It was my understanding, offer was made a counteroffer, and there's been no discussion since. Just wondering where that discussion may be. Again, I recognize it's not necessarily the zoning before us.
It's not necessarily a zoning issue. However, what we have said is, the answer to your question is yes. We are still, we've been willing to negotiate, let me put it that way, and we have agreed to buy the properties at their, they had a realtor give an opinion of value. I thought it was high personally. I'm in real estate. But we agreed to buy it at that value. And so, you know, that offer was, is open to them.
Again, just trying to understand things. Under the current zoning, because to me, like, right, like, the only potential issue, in my opinion, just speaking for myself, is this 20 feet of additional potential exposure in the sightline when you are now setback, what, 100 and?
More than 150.
More than 150 feet. So there's a question of whether that is a, in my opinion, a questionable about whether that is acceptable in this zoning question, rezoning question from LC4 to LC4. Under the current standard, the current LC4 zoning at 150 feet, what is the allowable under the current?
The allowable at 0 to 150 in the current ordinance is 35 feet.
35 feet. And everywhere in Polaris currently, now it's been rezoned because the 91 standard has then subsequently been rezoned, to, under the way that things are set up currently, because of all of the rezonings that have thus taken place since 1991, what you're requesting in your view, and I feel free, Ms. Pine, to verify Mr. Perry's comments, but is consistent with the way all of Polaris now looks? Is that what you're saying?
My answer would be is that it not only is consistent, but due to the north property line, this is more restrictive than other setback in height requirements in other portions of Polaris.
Okay. Ms. Pine, do you have any comment about that?
President Klein, I would just like to add that directly to the east or west of this property is an LC4 district with the height district of 110 feet that has the exact same setback in height provisions, and probably further west as well. It's just not reflective on the zoning map. But I've been involved in several rezonings along the west side of 71, stretching over towards Powell Road, where they've all had this staggered setback in height limitations, but they're all in the 110-foot height district.
The 110-foot height district, not the 150-foot setback?
Correct. Well, both, they have both the height and setback limitations built into the LC4 district, but the ultimate height district is 110 feet, subject to setback limitations.
And that's, and this proposal is consistent with that?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Thank you, President Klein. I have a question for clarification. So the top-left photo, is that from the north side of the property?
That is the south side on the former amphitheater property.
Okay. And the residential properties that are opposing this, they're on the, they would be on the north side?
They would be on the north side, and relative to the photos on your screen, they are outside of the picture, beyond the slope and the trees.
And do you know the distance from the residential structures to your proposed development?
Okay. The closest house is 134 feet from the property line. And remember, the property line is beyond the mound. It's north of the mound. It's not, it's not a measurement from the fence or from the pavement that we were looking at on that one photo. The closest house due north is 134 feet. The house to the right of that is farther.
And that's 130 feet before you get to the mound? Or right at the mound?
The toe of the mound on the north side is basically the bottom of the slope.
Right. It's actually, it's...
Yeah.
Yeah, and the mound area is 50 feet. It's at least 50 feet on top of that.
So we're talking approximately 180 feet from the residential structure to the other side of the fence where you would begin your proposed development?
Correct. The house setback plus the 50 feet is 180, and that would be the closest point that development on the Polaris 91 property would start.
Thank you. President Klein.
Yeah. If it's okay with you, Chair, I know we've had a lot of conversation with the applicant to have the, I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name, sir, but to have the lawyer for the opposition come back and at least try to rebut some of these claims?
Yes. President Klein. Mr. McDonald.
Thank you. Now, and again, this is, this is the same type of scenario that happened at the other hearings. You're seeing these pictures that work in favor of an applicant. There's all the trees, you can't see through the trees, the line of sight is actually at the crest of each and every tree. Ladies and gentlemen, that is incorrect. As you can tell simply by a street view, you're seeing through the trees and you see the fence line. That's what I proposed to the Zoning and Planning Commission. It is actually inaccurate, but the data that they presented was used to get passed. This entire time, we're talking about, well, how high can they see or at what point from the property line will they be able to see these hypothetical buildings? Ladies and gentlemen, at 35 feet, I'm, they should be able to see any type of development. But we're not arguing any type of development at this point because as the current zoning law is, there can be development. We're talking this hypothetical 150-foot building that people can look directly into their bedrooms. I mean, the pictures don't lie. These are photographs taken from the street. This isn't an artist. This isn't someone creating a diagram that's trying to convince you to believe, like, well, they won't be able to see. No. Ladies and gentlemen, you can see from the street at the top of the fence. Thus, I just ask that, as Councilman Brown stated, look for yourself. I'm asking that all facts, all evidence be presented, not just a portion or a segment, but make an informed decision. Any questions?
Councilmember Elizabeth Brown.
Could you remind me what the top-right picture is?
The top-right is the parcel that was adjacent to IKEA Way, I mean, to IKEA, to where the lighting, and this is at night, where lighting actually affects the community. This is to show you that, yes, I understand...
So is that, where is that taken from?
The west. The other parcel in which the applicant's saying, "Well, the other property to the west rezoned, so therefore, we should as well." But I'm just letting you know that the pictures speak for themselves. Property, homeowners will be affected because they already are. And I would hope that the city council understands that there already have been complaints from property owners surrounding the IKEA parcel. I would just ask, look at the evidence. It speaks for itself.
Councilmember Harden.
Thank you, Chair. But with the IKEA site, is that with the same 180 or so-foot setback that we, that the proposed project would come? And I think, I just wonder if the light pollution would be the same with a residential or a proposal versus a big store, like?
So your question is whether or not the proposed zoning currently on this case is the current zoning of IKEA?
Right.
Yes.
And it's back 150 feet or 80 feet, which is where we think from the book, the line?
To the applicant because I'm not well-versed in that parcel because I'm focused on this one.
Yeah, certainly. I just wonder if that's really the view that we would have with proposed?
This is a focus of, this is what hypothetically can bring to the Smiths as well as Mr. Byers. And I understand, I get it, they're trying to increase their yield for higher profits. I get it. That makes sense. I'm only putting at the council's table that there will be people negatively affected by that, and I'm asking that you consider their disposition. Imagine, put yourselves in their shoes. You go outside in your backyard and you're looking at 150-foot building through the trees. And respectfully so, Franz stated, "Well, only a portion time of the year, there would be foliage." Ladies and gentlemen, so my clients have to only enjoy their home half of the year? And it's very, very interesting that you have a multimillion-dollar company saying, "Well, we'll buy you if you go away." Ladies and gentlemen, there's no requirement for either of my clients to pack up and leave their home. As I stated earlier, they have invested in their community for over 10 years. They raise their children there. They have their grandkids come visit there. But yet, we just want to pack them up and say, "Go be somebody else's problem for a comp that has suffered already because of the IKEA development." That was not my pitch today. I'm not talking about comps and negotiations and what fell through. My clients are under no obligation to pack up their lives and go down to South Beach. It's just not. And the mere fact that an applicant is using that as leverage to pass legislation, just, it troubles me. Again, that is not the way legislation should be passed. It should be fair. It should be transparent.
Councilmember Senziano?
Thank you, Chair Page. So then, I hear you on fair and transparent, but we've heard no concerns from the commission. They passed it unanimously. And I understand there were some questions of whether authenticated or not, and then the concern of, well, they threaten to tear it down. We heard none of that. None of them have come forward. It's always been unanimous. So what wasn't transparent that they saw that is now coming forward?
So it was brought to my attention, by and through my clients, that one of the trustees, Ed Biocci, one of the trustees, I have it spelling in my binder, but he contacted us stating that there was a statement that there's no requirement or restriction for us to keep the buffer there. We can remove it. Right, but if, it's in the way that you use the words. So if you say, "Hey, we can move this mound if you want to object." So if their backs are against the wall, like damned if you do, damned if you don't, excuse my language, but that is literally why there was no objection. That is why. So if you're leveraging your rights, theoretically, I can say, "Well, if I don't get my way, I'm going to sue." That would be used as a coercive measure to get what I want, but that's not being transparent. That's our position. And again, don't, again, don't take my word for it. Contact the Far North Coalition. We have. We got a response. It corroborates what I'm saying today. Again, my clients and our collective disposition has been transparent. Like, look at the facts, look at the evidence, don't take someone's drawing for it. And if you do that, I'm confident that you will do the right thing and deny this application. Thank you.
Mr. McDonald, I have a quick question. Do you have any photos from inside your client's property from the second floor?
I can confirm. Sure, thank you.
And just for my colleagues, the reason why I'm asking that is that we have points of sight from two different perspectives, where we have what, like drawings and what you believe they would be able to see, and then pictures from the actual street view which are even further north of the property, just to see what the property owners can actually see out of their actual residence, I think would be helpful for me at least.
And while the council is looking for that, I do think it's important to remember that in this 20-plus or minus five feet of exposure, it's difficult, even at a downward angle, if you are in that 25-foot area, to see into a residence that's on, that would be a two-story residence. It's like living in New York. I was just in New York, and you're in a hotel room, and you're on the 50th floor of a hotel room, and you look out, you see maybe the 50th floor, the 49th floor, 48th floor, maybe you can see in those, but south of that, it's just a reflection. There's no, there's no sort of line of sight into someone's property.
Thank you, President Klein. And we'll pass around the photo. It appears to be from the outside of the structure, looking up from their deck. Councilmember Elizabeth Brown.
I also, I don't mean to belabor this, but when, I'm curious about the Far North Council's impression of the statement about the mound, because when I hear that... Council's impression of the, this, this statement about the mound, because when I hear that, I, I don't, I don't hear it as like a threat to the community, we could remove this, because I actually think from the applicant's point of view, that wouldn't help their case in front of us. If they were to come to us and say, we're going to take this mound down and totally level the area, that wouldn't help their zoning application. So I don't see that as like a true second option, and I don't hear it as a threat, and I just think that's an important point to make because it is, it's a pretty big accusation to say to someone they were, you know, being threatening to a community council. So I, I just kind of want to offer that.
If I may?
Yeah.
I think that, when I wasn't there, but from the correspondence from one of the trustees, as well as all of my clients collectively, they stated that, for lack of a better phrase, that if you do this, this will happen, but if you don't oppose, the mound will stay exactly where it is. So, and the mound is large, and my clients, if worse came to shove, they wanted the mound there. If they lost, if, if a new development, 35 feet, 50 feet, they wanted something, a large barrier or buffer there. But if you're using that to avoid their opposition for the rezoning application, I would respectfully disagree that, while I agree that it's not a threat, they could receive that as, well, I don't want to ruffle any feathers because I at least want the buffer there. And again, I would still defer to the Far North Coalition, because I, I was not there. But I do know that there were multiple members from the trustee who were.
I just want to give everyone an opportunity to review the photos.
And if I may elaborate, that is taken off of the balcony. So if you notice the angle or the trajectory of that camera, it is not up in the sky, it is just outward, off of the deck. So while we're hearing these assertions that you would have to look directly at a 45-degree angle to, to be able to see a building, that's just inaccurate. If you're out looking on either property or even inside the property, you're, you're going to see development. The only question for you is decide how much of that they will see.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. And we will allow an additional few minutes for the applicant to respond.
I just, I just want to give a quick rebuttal on the IKEA picture. That is a different area. I think you asked about where that picture was located. There is no buffer there. There is not a mound, there's not a 17-foot mound with an eight-foot fence on top of it. In fact, that, that Colonial Meadows Drive is the drive that he was showing it, that is actually higher than the IKEA site. And to President Klein's comment about what you actually see, the whole point that we've tried to make about the current zoning is this, is we have a parking and maneuvering four feet from their property line. So if the mound wasn't there, this is hypothetical, if the mound wasn't there, you'd have parking and maneuvering there. You'd also have a building that you could see, I mean, you're going to be able to see, you could see buildings with the current zoning. So that's not the standard, it's how far back and what's the buffer. And what our point is, is the buffer is significant, and we're going to keep it because that is a good result for everybody. So I just wanted to clarify that, because if the mound wasn't there, you'd have car lights in your backyard. We don't have a buffer requirement in the current zoning. And you'd also have buildings that you could see, because you could have a 35-foot building and you could still see it even if it's further back, if you don't have the buffer. So, thank you.
Are there any additional questions or comments from my colleagues? Well, I am inclined to move for passage, but ask for a voice, voice vote, sorry.
Mr. Brown?
No.
Harden?
Yes.
Page?
Yes.
Stenziano?
Yes.
President Klein?
Yes.
Thank you, President Klein. That's all we have in zoning this evening.
Any other questions or comments from my colleagues during the zoning portion? Regular meeting number 34. Seeing none, can I get a motion to adjourn? Clerk call the rule.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
Legislation. Sweetie, adjourn.